I like to call this August 14th Council Work Session and regular council meeting to order. Would everybody please rise for a moment of silence? And let's remember all of those who passed away during the month. And also in your prayers, let's remember a Bristol High School standout basketball player, Bobby Mars. He graduated in 74. I think personally, growing up watching him play, probably was one of the best shooters I ever saw. If there was a three-point line, he probably would have broken every record in the state. But let's remember him and his family in our prayers. Please salute the flag.
I declare the flag of the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dellen, do you want to call please?
Mr. President.
Here.
Ms. Cohen at Brazil, Ms. Aricis.
Here.
Mr. Gorman.
President.
Mr. Figueroa.
Here.
Mr. Johnson called and said that he is with the athletic football. He got called in. Mr. Petrocchi, present.
Okay, I'm going to open up public participation. Anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything, or they can't even state your name. Anybody on this side of the room? That ends public participation. Mr. President.
I forgot. Good evening, and thank you for the time. I'll try not to take too much of it, but as you may know, we have a very big project taking place on Market Street right now that's nearing completion. And this will be the last council meeting before it's completed, so I thought it would be a good idea. We've been doing things on social media, but I thought it would be a good idea to inform the public of exactly what we're doing, why we're doing it, and where we hope to go from here, okay? So we're calling it the Raising of Bar Market Street Corridor Project because although I'm going to speak to you specifically about the intersection of Market and Wood, when we conceived of doing this, Ron McGuckin, who was a board member at the time, said, why don't we do a whole street? Why don't we have a plan? Why don't we have something that visualizes a different climate on the entire Market Street corridor, which we thought was a pretty good idea. So I want to share with you something about that before we zero in on specifically Market and Wood. You know, and before we do that, I just want to remember, remind everyone where we've been. All the literature I've ever read from planning commissions, from the Behind States Department, the Interior, whatever it is, they've always said that if you want to kickstart a small town that's trying to revive itself, you begin with the commercial district because that is the spot where people converge, that's the spot where people form their perceptions about what the town in general might be like. And we have certainly done that. By we, I mean us and you. Also, they suggested you build public-private partnerships. We've enjoyed our relationship with the Borough Council, and I think the council appreciates the support we've given you. And also, the partnership between private investors and the things we do to stimulate interest in that. And then they also said focus on natural assets. And we have two very significant and special natural assets, and one is the river. And you guys certainly, I don't think you could have focused any more than you did by building those docks and that pier. And the other natural asset is our historic preservation efforts, the significant buildings that we have and the history that we have and wanting to tell that story. And then finally, organizing civic-minded volunteers. Not only our group, in fact, there's so many people in this town that volunteer, whether it's the Lions or the Rotary or whatever it is, but we have certainly in Raising the Bar cultivated a large group of people that are civic-minded and want to serve the town. So just before we get to Market Street, let's remind ourselves of where we've been, okay? And I don't want to beat this drum too much, but about 10 years ago, we had a 40% vacancy rate on Mill Street. Forty percent. It was like a ghost town. We had low self-esteem. People had their heads down. There was a negative public image about Bristol throughout the county, and investment was stagnant. People were not beating down the doors to invest in Bristol Borough. And where are we now? Thanks to your efforts, our efforts, and the efforts of many other groups, we are at basically full capacity on Mill Street. We get a call about once or twice a week, or once every two weeks or so, for people wanting to open a store on Mill Street. There are no storefronts. There's nothing open. There are things that are not being used right now because they're in transition, because they're being worked on for future use, but there's no vacancies to speak of. There's also been a significant and measurable resurgence of local pride. People are feeling good again about being from Bristol. There's an enhanced public image and a positive narrative taking place throughout the county about Bristol. We are the buzz again, and it's a very, very encouraging thing. And I used the word boom. I said, we're experiencing a housing boom. I don't know how else to say it. I don't think anybody would be building, the number of houses that are being built right now, the number of units being built right now, if they didn't have investor confidence that this place is going in the right direction. So it all comes together, and of course, what that does, as you know, and I hope the taxpayers know, that extends the tax base. And when you extend the tax base, you don't have to tap into the tax rate. So it's all good, and we're pleased that it's happening. So I like to think in terms of symbolism and catalysts, and if you remember this, these are some things that were catalysts for change. About 10 years ago, and I think this was Michael's idea, Councilman Gorman, that we were going to ask the borough if we could use that corner lot at the intersection of Old 13 and Mill to erect this structure called Mill Street Crossing because historically it was the place where King's Highway, the railroad, and the canal converged. So we called it Mill Street Crossing. We built that, and we said to the town, this is a gateway, not only to Mill Street, but it's a symbolic gateway to our future. And the town bought into that. They purchased, you see at the bottom there, you see the bricks that were, they purchased over $30,000 worth of bricks so that they could help us finance additional projects, okay? So what were we doing together? You guys were just on the cusp of approving the docks and the pier while we were getting facade grants. We got three facade grants from DCED totaling $150,000. By the way, the Regional Director of DCED is coming to Bristol tomorrow. He loves to come here. He loves to see our progress. He loves to see how money's put to use. I'm going to be taking him for a tour in the Central District tomorrow afternoon. We won the Small Business Revolution. That's all that happened. It was a really big deal, and it really, really stimulated enthusiasm in town. We rented billboards on Route 13. We rented a digital billboard on Route 1 just to get the word out, just to keep pounding away that there's a new Bristol here, okay? And right now, Mill Street is an investment magnet. So that's that. So why Market Street? What's the rationale between behind wanting to do something on Market Street? First of all, it's a major E-Brus from town, right? If you're going down Rackliff, you've got to turn down Market to go wherever you're going. So it's a high-traffic, high-visibility place. The other reason we picked it is because it's proximity to Mill Street. We wanted to go after the low-hanging fruit. And when we talk about the transformation of Mill Street, let's pay attention to the 100 and 200 blocks, or the 0 and 100 blocks of Pond, Wood, Cedar, and Rackliff, where now businesses are prospering there. You talk about Hobson Hardware. Who would have thought that there would be a thriving business at the bottom of the hill, you know, right there? And I don't think they would have made that investment were it not for what was going on right around the corner from them. So that was important. And then the ripple effect. We always said we wanted to do something to kickstart and then let things take a life of their own. Mill Street doesn't need our help anymore. It has a life of its own now. People are investing. People are coming. People want to go. We'll keep up the marketing parts, but it's taken on a life of its own. So we wanted to expand. And then finally, there's a high potential for existing assets. I want to take you for an imaginary walk down Market Street. And it's a place where we drive down every day, and we see the same things every day. And I think we take them for granted. What I want to talk about briefly is having a visionary look at what Market Street can be and how we can package it and articulate it in such a way that it'll mean things, not only to us but to visitors. So to do that, we're going to utilize public art. We're going to showcase existing assets, and we're going to provide a catalyst for investment, we hope. So here's the first thing. We're going to start at the Rackliff Street side of Market. Right now, we're looking at the building. I purposely wanted to use a contemporary photo of the men working because there's going to be a $5 million investment in that building. And it's right there at the end of Market. It's at a great intersection, and that's one. Across the street, there's another charming building, well-maintained, and we're happy to say one of Bristol's newest businesses just opened there, the Beagle Joint. It's going to be a popular place. They're working out some things. And it's right there at the beginning of Market, okay? Across the street from that is an iconic sign that we're all used to. We see it all the time. But when people come from out of town and see it, they really like it. They comment on it. They say, some people, that's my favorite thing, that kind of popular art. Across the street from that is what I consider to be the most beautifully renovated commercial reuse that I've seen in a long, long time, and has three very successful businesses, right? We have two personal care businesses, the Miguel Shop and Christine Bennett Shop, and then, of course, Jewel's a very popular and very successful restaurant. Now, here's a building that hasn't been a real favorite, but it's the location of Atlas Lighting. And what Eric Foreman has done, he's used facade grants, he's repointed the brick, he's changed some signage, he's added some lighting, which is what a lighting company should do. And my understanding is that the zoning board just recently gave him permission to illuminate that chimney and put the words Borough up there. Is that what it is, the Borough? Okay. So it's just, no, that's just a little thing. What I'm trying to say is taking together, they add up. Let's move down the street. This is not a very attractive photograph, but beyond that fence is a plan to have an outdoor courtyard, food court-type thing. We'll see how that develops, but again, private investment and another thing in the water. This building, we think, has a lot of potential. Bristol Riverside Theater purchased it, I guess, a couple decades ago now. And, you know, it has the goose-neck lighting. It did the nice lettering and all that. But we've been looking at those five black-shade windows for years. And going with the, I think, about art and celebrating our art, we think this would be an ideal place for the theater to display full window size instead of the shades, on the inside of the shades, things that celebrate past plays or plays that are coming, something that makes it vibrant and something that keeps that artistic flair and extends it, kind of a feel that you're not just at the theater across the street, you're kind of in the theater district because you have this going on. Same building, not a whole lot of investment required, but it would make a difference. This is there because I just want to, I'd like to give a shout-out to private citizens who take pride, somebody took the time, I guess it was Joe, right? Joe Downey took the time to use his money to invest, to put something like that there to make it more aesthetically appealing on that corner. And that's the kind of interest we need. We have a resident here tonight, Alex, my friend Alex, who helps Raising the Bar with all kinds of projects. It's the kind of things that some people do. They want to do something good for the town for others to enjoy. This is another building, also by Joe, a beautiful renovation of what was a pretty bad-looking building, and I think it adds to the character of the street. So here's a couple townhouses. We have some charming townhouses on the street, and there's a couple that I think, you know, I think once, if it catches on in what we want to do, I think investment on the street will increase, and you'll have more townhouses looking like this. This is kind of special. We probably have seen it 1,000 times. This is the rear entrance to the Masonic Lodge, which, by the way, leads to a parking lot capable of parking 50 cars, and it's a resource we should tap into as we try to figure out how to accommodate visitors to town. But this sign dates back a long, long way, and the colors are significant because each lodge, each lodge, multiple lodges meet at the Bristol Building, and each lodge has a specific color. And they were, we got, we heard word that they were going to take this down and replace it with a digital sign, which we think would have been disastrous. So we talked to them, and we made them a deal. We said, we'll match some funding. If you're willing to spend some money, we'll give you some money as well. And they agreed, so Luke Way drew up, one of our board members drew up a plan for what we could do with this site. You can't see it all. It was filled with debris. The weeds were often not tended to. So we did this instead. We elevated the sign, replaced the rotted posts. And the reason the sign's higher is so you can see it over the ornamental fencing that we encouraged to be put in. And we put tipple down to keep the weeds down. It's a cleaner, sleeker look, and as the other lodges present their wort, we'll install them beneath the primary sign here. So again, it's just a more pleasant, we know the person that lives next door. Every time we do one of these things, the person that lives next door is very, very happy to be next to this as opposed to what they were next to before. Another asset, we look at it all the time, right? I don't want to get into the future of fire protection in the borough. I don't know how that's going to get worked out, but I do hope that this will always be a building to be cherished as for its significance in the history of firefighting, not just in Bucks County but in Pennsylvania. And if it ever comes that there's a merger or whatever, we would hope that this would be turned into a museum. I think a museum with a commercial, with an adjoining commercial use that would help pay the bills is something that would work, but we have our eye on it. Another significant asset that's already there is the Friends Meeting House dating back to the early 1700s, okay? And we've been in contact with them. They're very enthused about being part of the master plan. And the next slide, one of the things they're already doing, this is a labyrinth. And for those of you not familiar, some of them are found on the floor of the cathedrals of some major cathedrals in Europe. It's a spiritual thing. You go there and you walk the labyrinth, or you pause and you pray, or you meditate, or you do some mindfulness exercises. And that's being done in conjunction with the Redemption Church. And we're going to talk to you a little bit about, in a minute, about how we're going to enhance the signage so that people will know about it. We think it's a spot where people might want to visit. And then we started this by talking about the new business at the Rackliff side of Market, the Beagle Place. This is, we're thrilled about this cupcake business that opened at the corner of Market and Pond. They're killing it. They have a terrific product. They only opened like two weeks ago. They have a terrific product. When they opened, they were jammed. They've been crowded every day since. And one of our board members just took a cake decorating class there the other day, and she said she had a ball. There's parties for kids, but the cupcakes are very unique. They come in a cup, and they're just really good. So we're thrilled about that. And then finally, the other far end of Market Street is the iconic image of the Bristol Stomp, or kind of our town national anthem, so to speak, right? Now, what I skipped was the main reason for discussion, and that is what we have planned for here, okay? On the left hand, I wanted to include this because I wanted you to remember what it looked like before we started working on it, okay? That sidewalk, you know, I guess I have a little bit of a frugality in me. I didn't want to do the sidewalk. I just wanted to do the plaza. And my board said, how can you possibly leave that sidewalk there when we're going to do such a beautiful thing in the middle? So we spent a considerable amount of money to completely redo the sidewalk. And then, so one on the left is several years old. The one on the right is more contemporary, and you see that over the years, the building, you know, needed cleaning. And we're happy to say, in the next slide, that that's what the wall looks like now. And that wall is power washed, it's primed, and it's ready to receive the mural, which I'll talk to you about in a minute. The two things you see in the foreground are elevated vegetation areas. We're going to plant, we're going to spend several thousand dollars to plant vegetation there, and we have water installed, so we'll be able to care for it. The walls are 18 inches high, which is a perfect height for sitting. So I can envision somebody going to Con Waters and getting a coffee, or going to Eatree or Loretta's or Papa's Pretzels and bringing back something you need, just sitting there and relaxing on an afternoon and, you know, taking in some sun. What you can't see is that embedded in those walls are downlights similar to the lights that were installed at the Grundy Museum, so that at night, it's really going to look cool. And those poles sticking up in the back along the building, they're the conduits for five lights that will be shining on the wall, all contained on the site. By the way, the next-door neighbor, Ralph Gonzalez, loves this project. He is ecstatic, and we talked to him frequently. We talked to him and his wife just yesterday. They're really thrilled about this. But anyway, that, so not only is it going to look good in the daytime, but you drive down Market Street at night by the end of September, and it's going to really pop. And we think this will be a catalyst for saying, Market Street's a pretty cool place. Let's do something there. You've seen these. These are pedestal interpretive signage that you see in different trails and whatever. You walk down State Street in Newtown, you see them. You go down, you go to Borden Town, and you see them. We want to put these along Market Street, and I'll show you an example. So we have two of them already installed at the site on Market and Wood. The one on the left will tell the story of Bristol as a maritime history, and also written by Carl LeBeau, the historian, former editor of the Bucks County Courier-Times. And the one on the right will thank the people who participated and donated and whatnot. We're not going to, I'm not going to get into that tonight. We're going to have a dedication ceremony at that time. We'll recognize everyone who did so much. But in addition to here, we'd like to put these signs at those places I mentioned. We'd like to put one at the rehearsal studio that tells the story of the theater. We'd like to have one at the Friends Meeting House, and then another one that explains the labyrinth, also at the firehouse, telling that history. The Market Street Plaza, we have two, and then the Bristol Stomp mural. So I think somebody could, you know, walk down the street and enjoy a little stroll and see, bring some of that history to life. So what are we going to do next? We're going to power wash it tomorrow. The pavers were donated by Bob Markey, which saved us a lot of money. They're the former pavers that were at the library, and they're in great shape physically, but, I mean, in terms of structure, but they're dirty. And we're going to power wash that baby tomorrow and make it come to life pretty good. I want to thank Luke Petrocchi in CBN and Quality and Realty for giving us the use of the law to host the mural. And I think, how many years, Luke, 99? Something like that?
If I don't die first.
Yeah, okay.
Life time.
After that, the lighting, the lighting's installed. We'll have to install the fixtures. The landscaping comes in next week, and then the mural application itself begins on August 21st. I don't want to tell you what the mural is because I think it's going to be more fun if you see it evolve. This is already created. It's in a studio in northeast Philly. The artist is from Lower Marion, and it's installed in 5-by-5 feet panels. It's going to start on the top left, and so you'll see the mural develop as a couple days go by. So by the end of, maybe by August 27th or so, the mural will be up. We're going to have a dedication ceremony on Thursday, September 7th. You and the rest of the town are invited. It starts at 6:30. And that's it. And we hope that this will be, lead to some other things that we do. Any questions?
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you very much.
As we say, it takes a lot of rigging before you can get oil, right? I know, sitting here, when I first got on council, we put up with an enormous amount of criticism, but this council was the catalyst of moving this town forward. And everybody just came in and it just kept flourishing. And I always said, we can't do it alone. We need people like you because you went above and beyond what we, our expectations. But if it wasn't for the fuel of a city, we don't know where this town would have been today.
We were on life support.
Yeah, we were. So, and not, like you said, the docks, $700,000. We're hours away from losing the entire project, and Fitzpatrick pulled us out with Tommy Tomlinson to get that money, so they would have never been put in. But we did roads, whatever we tried to do, we were criticized by the naysayers. But you know what? We didn't care. We just moved forward, and this is the fruit that you see right now.
Get on board and get out of the way.
That's it. But thank you for everything you do.
Thank you for all your support.
Yes, thank you.
All right, Craig, what do you have?
I just wanted to say that I wanted to do it this month, but unfortunately, I was away on vacation, so I couldn't get Mr. Stone the information that would be needed. Next month, I would like to bring in a couple of guys that were in charge of the flag football program, just as a recognition of the work that they did. I don't want to set the expectation that every time someone, you know, involves themselves in rec that we're going to come in and, you know, celebrate that in any big fashion. These guys, I think, were a great example of people that just wanted to be involved, didn't really have that outlet yet until we really kind of narrowed down and focused on the rec program. And, you know, I mean, when I went down to those fields, and I was there a lot, I coached, it was just such a great environment, and these guys did such a great job. They were a little critical of themselves, which I thought was honestly silly because it was the first time around, and they did just a fantastic job. And not only did they do a good job in organizing the league, but the environment was just really, really, really nice. And, you know, we should be proud of that and them, and I think it's just a recognition of where the Borough Program is going. And I know flag football is something that a lot of us have wanted to see succeed in this town for quite some time, and they just brought in a lot of kids, and they're an open book. They just say, hey, all we want to do is help kids. And I was really happy to see that. So next month, I would like to bring in those guys and just to recognize the work that they did. That's all I have.
I know you coached. I know your dad even came to.
He was my assistant.
He was your assistant. You left him in charge a few nights.
He's not used to be an assistant.
You guys did a great job.
Thank you.
All right.
I actually have two questions for Mr. Dellen. If we cannot have, like, the flashing light on the No Truck Sign on Beaver and Beaver Mansion, could we do something else there that will, so people can see that sign because there's still trucks going down there? And it's causing...
Maybe we can meet out there with the chief and you.
Yeah, I mean, we can't put a, like, maybe, you know, can we come up with something to prevent the trucks from going because for whatever reason, they're not seeing that sign that's there.
The problem is, and we've been dealing with this for years, they're going by their GPS, and their GPS is telling them to turn left. They're turning. They don't care what that sign says. They're making that left.
Yeah.
Am I right, Chuckie? You guys are...
Absolutely.
There's no way to, I mean, you could put all the signs. We tried No Trucks, big signs, Bridge Ahead, so, I mean, you know, meet out there with the chief, and maybe something we can do.
Yeah. We can move the sign or whatever, but if we can at least try, at least try. The other, oh, when are we getting sprayed with mosquitoes?
Trying for Monday, right? Mosquitos.
We're pushing the county. We're trying. We're trying.
Lois?
This morning, we had the soft opening of the Maple Street Bridge. For those of you who don't know where that is, it's if you pass the Public Works Building, if you continued, there was a bridge there that kept you, took you to Roman Hall's property in the old days, and the bridge had deteriorated. And the borough, we got a $2.2 million contract to replace that bridge, and the beautiful job, Loftus Company turned over the keys today. And what it will now allow is allow the police and the sewer plant workers to use the one lane that'll be blocked off to regular vehicle traffic to get back there. And on the opposite lane will be a full roadside lane that will allow bikers and walkers to travel back to the boroughs that owns property back there on the other side of the marsh. So this is probably something we can develop in the future with the right amount of grants and things of that nature. So this is probably something we can develop in the future, um, with the right, uh, right amount of grants and things of that nature. So this project, like I say, $2.2 million, and it didn't cost the Bristol Borough taxpayers a dime. Um, various grants through the government, uh, many of the government, state and county officials that always helped us out. And, uh, and also there was a million dollar contribution, uh, from the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority who bought our sewer plant and would now be able to use this, this roadway to get back there. So there will be a, later in September, will be a, uh, a ribbon cutting cer- ceremony, and we hope to see everyone there. Thank you.
Michael?
Um, just wanna say that, um, thank you for the, um, the Police Department for the presence, uh, throughout town and especially on Mill Street. Uh, people are constantly thanking, you know, saying make sure to thank you, so thank you for that. Um, and again, just keep our town beautiful. Uh, if you see something or something's not picked up, or there's the trash cans when there's an event, the Borough Public Works does a great job on top of that. But you could always reach out to myself, or Betty, or any of the council people for that matter. Um, you know, call or email or, uh, send to Mr. Dillon, he gets it out to us. And just keep that going, because, um, we have a beautiful historic borough, and we wanna keep it that way. That's it, thank you.
I'm not rushing it. I'm not trying to rush it, but it's 80 degrees in here.
It's hot in here, right? I'm not gonna talk last.
The air's not working, so that's why I'm trying to get...
Well, thank you for telling me. Um, I just have on, I guess we call it a electrical box on Pond and Mill Street, Mr. Dillon. It has graffiti all over it, I'll send you a picture of it, uh, in the morning. And, um, is there anything on the website about TVs? Because I see people are still putting the TVs out for trash, and they're not getting picked up, and they're still putting it out.
Well, they shouldn't put them out, they should bring them to the Borough Yard, and we have an e-waste container there.
Okay. And then, um, we're gonna do, uh, an award for her bees, or we can end of the year, whatever, and he wants us to put it off in December, because of his granddaughter and playing.
No problem.
Okay? And, um, that's all I have. Oh, and by the way, thank you, across the street from the Golden Eagle, that yard is so clean right now, I just, thank you.
Just one...
I just have one thing, I just wanted to say that, you know, Chief Morse isn't here this evening, because he's being a proud father. He's in Middletown tonight, where his daughter's receiving an accommodation for stopping gun store burglars in Middletown that she chased all the way into Trenton. So I guess it's in the blood of being a great cop. And with that, tonight, we have Sergeant Palmer, who's gonna talk about the Fish with the Cop program on September 10th.
I'll be real brief with that, just, uh, another note on that Joe Morse thing, his daughter also was recently in an article. She went into the water at, uh, one of the lakes there in Middletown after a lady in distress and her dog on a paddleboard, so she'll probably be getting another award, it does run in the blood. Uh, as far as fishing... It'd be two Chief Morse in Bucks County. Um, the Fish for the Cop's gonna be September 10th, between, uh, from eight to 10. Everything's all set, we've got about two applications, or three applications left, it's, it's filling up really quick. It was a week and we've filled up. Um, everything's all set, we had a lot of donations. Uh, the only thing I would ask of you guys, again, if you could cover us with your insurance, if that's possible. And September 10th, that date's good.
Good for us. Anybody have a problem with the 10th?
And you're all welcome to come check it out if you like. It's open to anybody who wants to stop by from the borough.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Chuck here? Anything else?
No, thank you for doing that, there's some kids in this town that probably wouldn't have had the opportunity to go fishing if it weren't for you guys.
Like I said, it kept me out of trouble when I was younger, so it's very inexpensive. Once you have the equipment that we provide, you can dig worms up if you have to.
Anything with the kids is all right.
Chuck was doing some research today, also with the bridge opening, he told me where he saw a couple of big mouth bass and... Who knows, he might have the kids down there fishing.
Yeah.
Uh, in your packet, uh, we sent the notices out to all the department heads, uh, we're starting work on the 2024 budget, so I believe, but, uh, we're starting that process, and I believe, uh, that's all I have. Bill, you have anything? No. Just a couple of things I have is, that Maria brought up about we're pushing the county, the spray for mosquitoes, that we're hoping to get it done. We heard Monday, now we're hearing within the next couple of weeks, so trying to get that done. We're also, we've been pushing for years for Penda, and they agreed to install some handicap at curb ramps on Mill Street at Wood, at Cedar, and at Pond. So we're getting, you know, a lot of ramps done, I think Ratliff's done now, right? For the most part, yeah. So we're getting there, we're doing everything we can to make every intersection handicap accessible. So, uh, I'm sure everybody, the frustration's done with Pond Street and the road program that we, we did in town, but I know it was a little frustrating for a few weeks, but the end result, I think everybody's happy with smooth already. Smooth.
Smooth.
So, uh, there was a lot of base repair and a lot of repair that needed to be done that was unexpected. But, I mean, Morrissey, once they started to pave, they just, I think, three, four days, all town was done. They were paving different sections at a time, so they did a good job. And the last thing is our grant applications for the RDA, uh, for police, fire, public works, and the rescue squad. Uh, we're starting to work on them applications that have to be in by, so it's a September, uh, it's a date in September. And I don't think I have anything else.
Ralph, can you mention that the show, Car Shows?
And the Carnival. The Carnival, yeah, I was gonna...
Is it distinct that there's a car show tomorrow? Or, excuse me, Wednesday, August 16th, um, at the Mill Street Parking Lot, and then again on Bristol Day, October 21st.
So when is Louis talking to that mic today?
I'm sorry.
I don't have that.
Wednesday, August 16th, and the Rain Gate is August 23rd. And this will be at the Mill Street Parking Lot on the Delaware River in Lyons Park. And, uh, then the next one is, uh, the 12th Annual Bristol Day Car Show, uh, which starts at 10 o'clock, and that is, uh, usually at Warren Snyder, yes, Snyder, Snyder-Girardi Elementary School, 450 Beaver Street. So, um, this one was rained out twice. I know, uh, March Walty was up here, um, notifying us about it before, but, uh, finally, they're, they've got it rescheduled now to this August 16th.
And don't forget, Monday, the JNA Carnival starts on August 21st, and it runs towards, to the 26th of August, starting at 6 o'clock every night. Uh, Tuesday night, a friend of mine and his company donates to all the Bristol Borough kids that can't afford to go on rides. Uh, he pays for the kids every year, it's, uh, gives them wristbands, gives them some food to eat through the, in conjunction with the Police Department and the mayor. So that whole thing will be Tuesday, the 22nd. Rain Gate will be Wednesday, the 23rd, and I think you can get your vouchers downstairs at the police station. So Borough kids that wanna come, that can't afford it, it's a good opportunity for parents to bring them and let them enjoy it. Uh, I don't think I have anything else. I'd go through our agenda. Any agenda? Nothing else? Nobody has anything else? Okay, so we'll start, any poll participation? That ends poll participation, we're gonna number two on the agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the council meeting minutes for July 10th, 2023, accept the attorney's report for June of 2023, accept the fire chief's report for July of 2023, accept the inspection department report for July of 2023, accept the public works report for July of 2023, accept the police report for July of 2023, and accept the hard report for July of 2023.
Second by Mr. Rodriguez, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number three.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize an adoption of ordinance establishing parking restrictions for a portion of Howe Street.
Second by Mr. Catroci, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number four.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the adoption of the ordinance to amend the responsible contractor ordinance at section 1-150 of our code of ordinances to increase the threshold to $750,000.
Second by, uh, Mr. Gorman, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number five.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize a request for a 90-day time extension to October 11th, 2023 on the 802 Bear Street demand development.
Second by, uh, Mrs. Figaro, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number six.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the bidding rejection of 2023 CDVG curb ramp bids.
Second by Mr. Pazza, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number seven.
So then again, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the bidding of 2023 CDVG curb ramp project.
Second by Mr. Figaro, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number eight.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the engineer to prepare bids with specifications and authorize advertising for bids to improve the intersection of Ratliff and Mill Street per state grant. I'm sorry, by the way, I thought, I thought that was a different motion that I had. No, that's okay.
Second by Mrs. Rodriguez, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number nine.
I'd like to make a motion to ratify settlement stipulation to resolve Russo zoning appeal for vacant lot on Ray Street, TMP 04-009-022 for single rent.
Second by Mrs. Figaro, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number 10.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to ratify the settlement stipulation to resolve the Nassau zoning appeal for a retail store for 825 Pond Street.
Second by Mr. Catroci, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number 11.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to ratify settlement stipulation and pilot agreements to the tax assessment appeal complaint by reducing assessment for the Milbrook property for tax years 2021, 2022, the order of parcels 04-024-073
Last, second by Mr. Catroci, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Since it's 80 degrees, I get a motion to adjourn. I slowly second by Marit.